To the Burnsville News, Courier News, and the Star Ledger filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on April 18th, 2020. Christine, you have your flag.
Hold on.
I'll get one if you don't. Okay. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
allegiance to the flag. It's America.
The Republic.
We stand.
We stand. One nation under God.
Justice for all.
Justice for all. Okay. We now have an open session, so if anyone from the public would like to speak, if you go to the Participants' Icon and click on that, there's a little... You can raise your hand there. There's a little signature there thing that you can raise. It says, "Raise Hand." So if you would like to speak, please click on that and raise your hand. No? Don't see any hands up. Give them another minute, just in case. Okay. We will then close the public session. So we have Resolution 2128, which came as a result of a couple of things. We were waiting for... The Assembly had passed a bill that would allow us to extend the grace period on tax collections. That got stalled in the Senate, so we don't know the future of that bill. In the meantime, the New Jersey League of Municipalities had come up with an, you know, the solution if you wanted to do something where you could... Municipalities are allowed to adjust the rate of interest on late taxes. So that's what... Where this came from, and I will let Tom give us kind of the background because you've brought this to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, actually, the Finance Committee looked at this based on the letter that we received from New Jersey League of Municipalities. That's something that was attached for the council members to review, the letter from the League of Municipalities. I think the question is whether or not we have the financial wherewithal to make a change like this, and whether or not the change itself would actually be conducive of the objective of trying to help people in need. Because it's a fairly significant consideration, we felt that the three members of the Finance Committee ought to bring it forward to the full council for their consideration. And we needed to do that if we were going to make a change... If we make a change, and we were going to make a change to affect the May 1st quarter, there's a certain amount of time that needs to be after the decision in order to send written notices out to people about any such change. And in order to do that, we needed to have the extra week that's facilitated by having this special meeting tonight. The background that was forwarded, along with some analysis from our staff in the Finance Department about the pros and cons of doing something like this, and a lot of the data when we put this meeting on the calendar, the questions were envisioned, but the answers were not yet available. So over the course of Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and part of the day today, Tuesday, we received input from what other towns are doing, some selected other towns are doing, as well as information from our software provider about the hurdles that they would have, or the assistance that they could provide in doing something like this. And also, we've gotten feedback about what the financial implications might be for the borough as well. So at that point, I think we should open up for questions because, you know, right now, there's a lot of questions, and I think that if we want to address some on a case-by-case basis, questions that the council members have, it'd probably be easier than trying to give a global overview.
And I don't know if you saw the email. Leslie just sent us a spreadsheet. Did everybody have a chance to look at that? With revenue shortfalls that we're expecting?
No, I didn't see it.
I didn't see that either.
I'm taking a look at it now, and my question to Leslie would be, are these anticipated revenue shortfalls or potential revenue shortfalls? In other words, are these likely to occur, or are they just possible?
Sorry, Leslie, maybe she only sent that to the Finance Committee members because Jeff nor I have it.
Yeah, I don't have it either.
Oh, okay.
I haven't actually even looked at it yet, so...
Actually, Leslie was muted.
Am I good now?
Yeah.
Can you hear you, Leslie?
Yeah, it was sent to the Finance Committee. I wasn't sure, but it should go to the full council before you guys got to review it. The revenues that are shown on that spreadsheet are the exact revenues that we are at right now. So they are the actual numbers. They're not projected at all. The only thing projected is just my little notes next to them that say what the potential continuation of those losses are.
So what you're saying is that this is our current status as of end of April, where the revenues are. So as far as like construction fees, you wouldn't expect 12 months of the construction fees by the end of April, right?
Well, I compared it 419 of 19 to 419 of 20.
Oh, I see. So then it is showing a difference. So then what's an annualized number then for this? Even higher?
As far as losses go?
Yeah.
I would think so, yeah. It depends on how long this continues. But now that... Especially with construction fees, now that nothing is allowed to be done that's not essential, that's probably going to be a pretty hard hit. And then, you know, pool and rec, whether or not those things open or open as normal, that can be a pretty big number, too.
Yeah, pool and rec aren't likely to get any... Aren't likely to get any worse, but they potentially might not get any better either.
Right.
But they don't... They're not going to go downhill further. They've already zeroed out.
Well, we would probably still be getting some revenues for future programming and more pool revenue.
Right. So in other words, the inverse is happening on the rec line that's happening on the construction line. The construction line may continue to get further apart, more red, whereas the recreation fees, we might be able to recoup some of the red.
Potentially.
Tom and Leslie, could you guys forward that document so we're all looking at the same?
Sure, I can send it to you right now.
Please.
Actually, and I think on one of the items, like the library rental, you know, we're going to lose the revenue upfront, but the agreement is that we will get it by the end of the year. So that one may change. But looking at this, it's easily over 100 grand that we're going to lose in revenue, if not more. 150-ish, whatever. Which is pretty significant.
But I think it would be important to point out that this actually has nothing to do with tonight's decision either. This is just sort of the background, the background of what's going on right now. And then we'd have to consider, and Leslie's put together some estimates for us as well, as the potential impact of tonight's decision on something like this as well. But it would be... If there's any potential losses of revenue, it would be additive to the spreadsheet that she's forwarding right now.
I did send it, so you should...
Thank you, Leslie. I got it.
So specifically then, questions about what's in front of us. We asked Jack Pigeon when the original letter from New Jersey League of Municipalities came out was whether or not we could use discretion in terms of having a delinquency tax interest rate that's unique to somebody who has a financial hardship rather than across the board. And the answer was that the municipality only has the discretion to make across-the-board changes, that we can't do it on taxpayer-by-taxpayer basis or use any sort of discretion. Correct, Jack?
It's correct.
All right. So I think that answers one question that had been posed previously by some of the council members. Any other questions council members have?
Yeah, I mean, so I'm looking at a document that has fees and permits and a variety of revenue that is potentially incrementally different. Now, are there cost structure items that are also different that help to offset this
So Leslie, this is just a list of the revenue look, and it's not inclusive right now of cost savings actions that we put in place.
Correct.
So Chad, to answer the question, I don't... We don't have the complimentary page that shows potential savings. Don't know if that's something that we could generate. I like to stress again, though, this is not... This is not impacted by tonight's decision. This is sort of the background of where we stand today as of 415, did you say, Leslie?
19.
419?
Yeah.
As of 419. So this is sort of the background within which we're making this forward-looking decision as it relates to potential delinquency tax interest.
Well, I think there's a couple components.
So I mean, my question would be, did we ask on the county call today whether or not what other towns were doing?
So far, none that we know of are doing this. We got a letter from, I think... Trying to think who I sent them, probably to the Finance Committee, but I know Basking Ridge is not doing it. A number of Somerset County towns, and no one said yes. Well, I got a few people who said no, and I think, Leslie, you reached out to some tax collectors, too, in other towns. So I haven't gotten a yes from anybody.
If memory serves me, Somerville and Bedminster said they were not doing it.
Right.
As well as North Plainfield, I think, said no.
Yeah, there were a number of them. We didn't hear from all of them, but most of them said no.
And Burnsville Township said no.
Yeah.
And I think it all looked the same way. See, like, a lot of formidable hurdles, administrative, sort of, we have cash obligations we have, come hell or high water, have the money or not. It's a lot of things we, you know, it's a lot of... Too many unknowns to approach, you know, to embrace at this point, I think, especially without any guidance or aid from the state, and just how to exactly proceed.
Well, I think John's point is most clearly brought forward when you think that, you know, we collect taxes for the entire town, including the schools, the county, the county open space, our own open space, as well as the municipal budget. Municipal budget of which uses maybe only about $1 out of every $4 that we collect. So we, the municipality, are on the hook for all $4 every month that we have to pay out all the money, but we only actually use or utilize or control about $1 out of every $4. So that's a very important point, and I think Councilman Donahue was alluding to that in his comments.
I mean, I think Leslie's done a great job of sort of breaking down some of the hurdles and obstacles we'd face, and, you know, it's like, my thought is that we probably shouldn't move... Discuss it, but maybe not move this, because it's... I don't think it's something that is workable right now, at least.
So the issue, though, is not to defer the tax, but to reduce the penalty if somebody chose to not pay on time. That's correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So the rate for above $1,500 is significantly high. It's higher than your credit cards in many respects. Have we considered perhaps reducing that a tad or a bit, maybe not going down to zero, which was the example used by the NJLM letter, but something less burdensome?
I mean, are we allowed to talk about our opinions at this point, or are we just asking factual questions?
No, you can share your opinion.
So, you know, my thought, Jeff, is if we have to bond this or take out a loan, whatever interest rate we're charging on delinquent taxes should at least exceed whatever interest rate we could expect from a loan.
Well, we're currently charging 18%.
Yeah. So the loan right now is 3%?
I'm actually asking a rhetorical question, just to make sure that we've got it on the record, that we've discussed all options. I agree with John. We have statutory obligations that we have no... We have no wiggle room on, and those amount to a staggering $2 million a month to the school. And, you know, we could do all the cost cutting we want, it still doesn't impact that.
But I think that there's a leverage point here. Have we asked the school how they're revising their budget down within the current crisis situation? Because every single department, and, you know, everywhere in the country, budgets are getting revised to meet the current situation. I think that we should expect the Board of Education to revise their budget to be commensurate as well.
And that may be great for going forward, but we had to make a decision because the next tax is due on May 1st.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, our function is their tax collector. They can say what they want, and they'll get it, so...
But that doesn't mean that we can't obviously state that we should be taking action.
They can't revise their budget at this point in time. It's all statutory and approved by the state.
Theirs have already been approved and finalized, so they can't go back and change it. And the tax levy has been cut, so...
Okay.
But I do think to Chad's point that, you know, we could engage with the school board to say, hey, you know, how about next year? Maybe there's some relief that could be provided for next year. Again, it wouldn't really affect us, the municipality, or the budget. It would only really affect the taxpayers per se.
Yeah.
So I think what we ought to... I think we ought to be looking ahead, not just... Not to what we do right now, because I think we're up against the wall, and there's not much we can do, but we should be thinking about the August 1st tax.
Yeah, I think we should pass on this particular one, kind of without prejudice, to August. More clarity comes out of Trenton. Maybe there's something we can do, but based on the sort of landscape now, you know, this is sort of a nonstarter, I think, for a lot of different reasons.
Well, I think it's going to be financially very risky if we were to implement something because we don't know how many people may choose to not pay their taxes. I mean, that's why the zero rate, I think, runs a huge risk, because people may just say, well, if there's no penalty at all, then I can just wait and pay my taxes at a later date. And I think that would... Because we owe $3 out of every $4 we collect to somebody else, I think that puts us at a huge risk of having enough cash flow to manage through this. That leaves us really with Dr. Hammond's question, which was, you know, if we lower it to a different number, that gets us into a lot of logistics that our software company, who normally runs the calculations for us, will not assist us with, will not be able to assist us with. So we're... Be put into a situation of manually calculating any kind of delinquent tax rates on different people, different rates if they've had previous delinquencies, if they have future delinquencies. You could end up with, was it, Leslie, four different rates for four different time periods for every taxpayer?
Yeah, it can get pretty cumbersome.
And my concern would be not just that it would be extra work for our staff, which would cost us some incremental amount of money, but my concern is that you introduce a lot of opportunity for error, and, you know, those errors, we don't know. I mean, there would be unintended errors, but anytime you make a process manual and you multiply it times 300 or 400 or 500 taxpayer accounts, you know, you introduce the possibility for mistakes, you know?
So Leslie, talk to me, because I read through the manual calculation piece, but I did not see that a provider was unable to calculate through electronic means interest rates. Can you discuss as to why? And that seems like a pretty simple automated procedure.
I reached out to our tax software company, and as it stands right now, our system 8 and 18 is the basic generic, pretty much every town adopts 8% on the first 1,500, 18 on everything over 1,500. So tax programs are pretty much set up that that's what you're going to be charging, and there's only one place to put that number. There's the under $1,500 number, the above $1,500 number, and then what that $1,500 number is. So the 1,500 would go there if you wanted to make the threshold, 2,000, 10,000, whatever you want, you could put that there. The issue comes with the fact that we would have three separate periods of time. We would have the pre-May 1st, where we would have the 8 and 18. Then we would have the May 1st to whenever the council chooses to end this reduction as a second period of time. And then you'd have the third time, which would be after the resolution expires through to, you know, infinity, whatever. So the system would actually have to calculate different interest rates on each quarter based on how long they've been past due, which period of time they fell in, and it turns out to be, like I said in that one email, just somebody who happens to be two quarters past due is... Has potential to be eight separate calculations, just to figure out how much that person needs to pay to become current.
So unless... So in the system, knowing the way that... Look, I don't... Haven't seen inside your systems, but I'm sort of... I'm putting my mind's eye in the way that the math is done. If you took all interest rates, and let's just say you made them all 8%, because that was the number that you used, and it has nothing to do whether it's a May 1st forward or if it's a prior quarter, you could say that all interest rates were calculated at this rate going forward until it's further changed, couldn't you?
But we can't apply retroactive...
Going forward.
But Jack has an answer to that question, Chad.
Yeah, we can't change the interest rate retroactively.
Why?
Big law.
It's the law.
Even if we make it lower? I personally don't like that law.
So just to be clear, Admins, who's... Admins, is that the name of the software company? Admin said they can't do it at this time, and that if we wanted to make this kind of change that was outlined by Leslie, they said you'll have to do it manually. So the software company's response was, if you want to do it, you have to do it manually.
Close my mind.
The software company that... I think it's the number-one software company for tax calculation, so it's not like, you know, if we can just change software companies.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, I understand.
Chad, I wouldn't be too worried about "manual calculations." I mean, Excel spreadsheets and formulas work wonders these days, so...
That's what I was thinking, right?
It's not terrible, but, I mean, honestly, for me, I think this whole thing is a nonstarter at this point. I mean, we don't... I mean, the state's not giving any leeway. We still have to pay the $3 or $4, you know, to the county and to the library, not the library, the schools. So, I mean, I don't see how we can forego interest on delinquent accounts at this point without having enough info.
Yeah, the other unknown is what our state aid is going to be. We haven't gotten any clear numbers on whether we're going to get the same state aid, if there's going to be additional state aid. Right now, there isn't. So, you know, that could really affect how we go forward.
So I'm just trying to think... Sorry, go ahead, Christine.
It sounds like everyone's kind of in agreement that it's very early to determine whether or not this would really be a benefit to taxpayers. But I have a question, and I guess this might be for Jack, which is, could we suspend as... In an effort to try to provide some kind of relief or as a good gesture to people who are suffering right now, or who are financially and, you know, physically maybe even suffering, could we propose to terminate the open space tax for now to the end of the year and then reinstate it next year? It's not a lot, but it's something at least.
In my opinion, and some people disagree, I think we can only change it by referendum because it was adopted by referendum.
Just trying to look for ways to provide relief that are a little bit less, you know, cumbersome or whatever, costly to us, because it sounds like this from an administrative cost is going to be big, you know, big to us.
Yeah. And I think I'm also hearing that maybe it's not... Right now, I don't think anyone is looking to do it, but it might be a possibility for the August payment, depending on what happens in the next month or two. Is that reasonable? Is that kind of where everybody is?
Yeah, that's why I thought throughout that we ought to be thinking about August. But let me ask you, Mayor, in your conversations, because I know you have periodic talks with the governor and other officials, is it... What's the likelihood that the state's going to do something that would untie our hands and make it likely that we could do something?
Yeah. I'm not sure what the state's going to do. I think it's more what the federal government is going to do, because right now, they're debating additional aid through the CARES Act and where it's going to go. You know, they're debating whether it goes to the states and municipalities, or it goes to more of the first responders and equipment, and that, I don't know how long they're going to debate that, but there are bills being proposed. As a matter of fact, I think for the next Monday's agenda, we have a resolution in support of a bill that our Congress people are putting forth to help small businesses and municipalities. So there's a lot of the unknowns, unfortunately.
So what are the... What's the... What are the solutions if we can't make this payment, if we don't have the money? Is it... Obviously, it's bonding, right?
You mean, if we can't give our $3, $4 out of the $5?
Yeah. If we don't have the cash flow to make these next set of payments, what are the fiscal solutions that we have in front of us?
Well, the state has made some... I think there was some... An email that they are allowing us to borrow, which is how thoughtful of them, but, yeah, we can borrow. I think there's some funds we have that we can move around for cash flow, but at some point, we may not have that opportunity.
But Leslie, is that imminent, or is it something that you're projecting towards the end of the year, we may have a cash flow dilemma?
It really depends on how many people take advantage of an extension, if there was one, or, you know, whether people can pay. Right now, we have the Open Space Trust Fund, which is, you know, we have quite a bit of cash sitting in that account. I already had to borrow to pay the April school tax, which was $2 million out of it. We'll probably get that back when one of the big mortgage payment people pays the May quarter. But if we were to give people incentive to not pay on time, we would also have to pay another $2 million to the school and another $2 million to the county in May. So it gets hit fast, and it really...
Leslie, what kind of flexibility do you have within the parameters to tap into other cash funds? Is it unlimited, as long as it's a loan with some kind of minimal interest rate?
We can borrow from our other funds without any restriction, as long as the cash is there. So we're not really charging anything. It's just within the cash account, so we're just taking $2 million to pay the liabilities that we have. And then once we have the cash back in our current fund, we just put it back. So it's really just back and forth between the accounts. There's no real restriction there.
Okay. And Jack, just so all options are on the table, what are the consequences of not paying a liability?
Depends on who the payments to.
That's... Well, right now, we're talking about the county and/or the school.
Well, I know some towns delay payments to the school. I don't know what their recourse is, but at some point in time, we have to pay it.
Yeah. But I mean, everybody's facing these same realities, right? It doesn't matter if you're a business or a municipality.
That's right.
Sometimes you may need to make the choice not to pay a bill. So it's an undefined recourse if you don't pay?
Well, but we have a statutory obligation. It's not just like we have a... We signed a note. So we would have to pay it at some point.
Sure.
You know, we're supposed to pay it by a date certain.
Well, I remember... I thought that there were some significant ramifications if we essentially default. I remember on the orientation budget presentations when I was a new councilperson last year, they said not paying your obligations as a municipality was pretty dire.
Well, I agree. Now, I know some towns... When I say they're late, they're a couple weeks late because they don't have the cash. But, yeah, I mean, because, you know, you have a fiduciary duty to make it, as well as a statutory duty to make those payments.
Yeah, and I think...
You just choose not to pay them.
And if you default, I believe the state steps in, yes, and...
I'm sure.
Yeah. Not saying that's the path I'd choose. I'm just trying to understand all potential possibilities here.
And I would think a deliberate non-payment would be, you know, a violation of your duties as an elected official.
Well, it's one thing if you choose not to pay when you have the money. It's different if you don't have the cash, right?
Yeah, you can always borrow.
Ralph, what were you...
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, you know, you always have a means to do it.
Yeah, I think we ought to take that solution off the table. We don't have the option not to pay.
I agree.
Right. So right now, the resolution that's on the table is whether or not, you know, we're going to move this or just let it go and revisit it for the August payment. So maybe, you know, in another month or two, when things level out. Yes?
I can speak for myself. You know, the other Finance Committee members, I think, welcome to provide their input at the same time. But I think that the financial risk related to doing something like this and the unknowns do not really support us making this change at this time, so I, for one, would not move this forward.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, I agree as well, but I would like to understand, I mean, if the state and the county are not going to be giving us any... the state and the county are not going to be, um, giving us any, um, relief on this, I mean, what are, I mean, how can they expect that the municipalities have enough cash flow to eat all of those costs without giving any relief? So I would like to talk about that on the county calls, the state calls and find out what, what they really think a municipality, a municipality as small as we are and other ones can do in this case. But I agree that.
Tell us tomorrow. That's pretty much the answer you get is you always have the option to borrow.
Or as a municipality, you slash expenses.
No, but I think to, to Councilman Hammond's point, I mean, we don't, we don't have enough expenses to slash to make up for the, for the $30 out of every $4 that we give away. So that, that's not really a practical solution, although it's possible, uh, it's possible that we could do that. It's, it won't practically get us to where we need to be. But I, I do think, you know, just to be clear, I mean, we, we intend to continue to collect property taxes and that's how we're going to pay our bills going forward.
Well, I, I think a message needs to go, and Jack, I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying in regards to budgets being passed, but these are unique and unique times. I, I think all, all cost centers need to reevaluate their structure, including the Board of Ed, which currently is keeping its schools closed. So, uh, putting leverage in that direction, I don't think is unnecessary, you know, is something that probably is necessary.
I understand what you're saying, but the problem is people talk about New Jersey as being a home rule state, but it's really not. Municipalities can only do in New Jersey what is specifically authorized by state statute. Unless the authority is delegated from the state, we can't do it. And the same is true of Boards of Ed.
If I cannot, you know, in just what the Board of Ed has done this year, they got an extra aid payment when they redid the formula slightly. And what they did with that money is put it towards debt service. So the increase in their, um, tax levy was, is very low this year because they use that extra money against their debt. Um, and I would assume they would do the same thing with any savings they get this year from not doing transportation and what other services they're saving on. Having been a school business administrator, that's what we did when we had extra, you're only allowed to keep a 2% surplus. And so you either put the money into a capital reserve account and then pay cash for your projects, or you put it against your debt service and lower your debt. So, um, that's, that's what their options are if they do have savings.
That's why I think we need to push up, not sideways or down.
Yeah, I think you're right, Gina. It needs to go up. I, I think you are right. And it includes a conversation about, you know, all payments, including at the municipal level and the school board level.
So we are not moving this? Nobody's going to move this resolution? We're going to take it off the table for now? Agreed?
I would agree.
Okay. And we will revisit it.
Do we need a meeting tonight then?
Do we what?
Do we even need a meeting this evening then, if that was the only order of business?
No, we have another item on the agenda.
Okay.
And this, uh, thank you, Christine, for bringing this to my attention. It was a, it's a Boxcar. If you remember, they do, um, buses, they have transportation and in a lot of towns they do the, um, coin operated parking spots or not coin, they're by app. They have an app where you, if you park like in Madison or Cranford, um, you use the Boxcar app. And so their revenue had been down because people obviously aren't parking in parking lots and going shopping. And they partnered with, um, Largilo Produce, whose revenues were also down. And together they've put together this, um, drive through grocery program for, you know, a lot of people are very uncomfortable still going into supermarkets. And what they do is you order online on the, on the Boxcar app or their website. They, um, prepare, they have a bag, they take your license plate, your make and model of your car. You drive through, um, wherever the parking lot is, pop your trunk, they put it in the trunk and off you go. You pay online. They've had a lot of success with it in Madison and Cranford, and I forget where else. It's not, I mean, it's no, the only thing they're asking for us is to use, um, the train station parking lot. I think it's once a week that they do a delivery. So they need permission if we're going to let them do that. They're expecting, um, you know, the most they probably have in Bernardsville area would be maybe 50 people in a time slot coming through. And if you've gone past the train station lately, it's very empty. Uh, and they would probably use this section where we do the, um, farmer's market.
Got a question?
Yes.
I mean, listen, it's a novel idea. It's much like a CSA that some of the local farms have. But the question I had is, we're the only one in this area. You look at the other places, there are like Summit, Madison, I think Springfield, Cranford, as you mentioned. So is it realistic that they're only going to have 50? I mean, would they be, they would be bringing potentially in, uh, more? If I looked at, if I remember their, um, uh, the proposal that they said actually said 100 boxes. So the question then becomes one of, of traffic flow along 202. The map that they provided of the, of the traffic flow was for, I think, Milburn.
Uh, was it Milburn? Yeah.
Milburn or Madison, which was a considerably larger area than our train station is. And I'm just concerned if we had 25 or 50 or, you know, even 15, perhaps, uh, cars that showed up at the same time, that could present a problem along 202. So the question I had is, uh, what, you know, what is a realistic estimate? Are they going to service more than just Bernardsville, I would presume? Is this done by appointment? Or is it, uh, anybody shows up whenever they show up? Uh, and is there a better location? I'm not against the idea, but perhaps.
The other location I had suggested was possibly the library parking lot because that's empty now too. And it's, it's got a longer flow, you know.
Well, I was thinking of the pool because you could, you could actually create a, uh, kind of a snake, uh, around the, the pool parking lot and then come out along, uh, in front of the middle school. That's a good idea. You know, is there a better location than the, than the train station? Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Jeff.
Yeah, actually, I didn't even think of that one. Thank you. That's a good idea. You know, they were, um, they, they said they'd take whatever property we, you know, whatever we thought would work. So I, that's great because then you wouldn't get those backups on a main street.
And what exactly, I didn't, I didn't, I could not open the FAQ, uh, section, but what was their proposed hours of operation?
Um, actually, let me see. I can find it. I had it open here. Was it? No, I can't find it. I'm not finding it here. Um, let me look at my email.
The only reason why I ask is if we do move it to someplace like the Polo Ground, uh, middle school pool area, um, you know, what would be the potential impact on neighbors? If there's a whole lot of cars out there strung out there along, um, along their.
You're over the number that would have been picking up kids that afternoon.
Yeah, exactly. That was my thought too. Good point. I, I, I see that Chief Altine's on. I just, I saw his picture up. Do you have anything else you want to ask from a public safety point of view, Chief?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Hammond. Uh, we did discuss this a little bit before the meeting and, and Dr. Hammond is echoing some of my concerns. And these, this is based on some of the things that we're seeing across the state on our morning briefings with law enforcement. These types of drop off produce pickup areas and grocery drop off and pickup areas are popping up throughout the state. And while social distancing really isn't a concern and they're doing it safely with trunk deliveries and things like that, the main concern that's coming up is traffic, traffic, traffic. So I think we need to be careful about the, the place that we select. There is no room really for stacking if a lot of people turn out to this at the train station all at one time. So I'm, I'm all in favor of a better, uh, location, whether it be, you know, one of the schools, whether it be up at the Polo Grounds or the pool, as long as school is out, that's not a problem. You know, being the only one in the area, you know, we have a potential to draw from very big areas. So I'm, I'm wondering if they're putting a cap on the number of customers and if they, they have proposed how long they want this, uh, operation to be open. Is it one hour, two hours? Are they going to stagger the appointments? Is everybody going to come at one time or are they going to?
It says, it does say 12 to 3 is what they're doing in the other towns. I'm not sure, you know, and they probably only can do so many at a time. I mean, I don't know how many boxes of food they can actually put together and bring to one site. So it may be a first come, first serve kind of thing of how many people order.
Yeah, they were pre-packaging everything. So it's not like you can, it's not like ShopRite from home or Instapart where you can order what you want and then it gets delivered or you pick it up. It's actually a pre-canned.
Right.
Well, it's like, it's like a CSA.
Yes.
You get what they give you.
They have. They also were talking to, um, Lenny's Pizza about having, you know, pizza kits and some of the local merchants that want to, you know, put something into the box so that they'd also be able to sell some things.
That's actually, it's not a bad idea. Is that, is that part of the, can we make this part of the deal that, look, you have to include local merchants in this?
Well, if they want to participate, I mean, you can't force them to. They did went down to Lenny's and they were waiting for an answer.
I was thinking about, sorry, go ahead.
Because the other question is, is, uh, how long would this go on for? So in other words, once the emergency is lifted, the state of emergency is no longer in effect, uh, would, would they end automatically or would they want to continue the service?
No, I mean, they couldn't because like, I think in all the towns, the sites they're using are sites that are currently not being used. So once you need your site back, they can't continue.
Yeah, we should only give them approval for a set period of time for a couple of reasons. One is that, you know, logistically it may become too hard for us to manage or from a safety perspective or traffic perspective, it's too difficult. And the second is that, uh, you know, what about our local shops that sells comparable products and pay us property taxes and have been good citizens for the last several decades? We don't want to displace any of our existing businesses, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only businesses and I'm, sorry, Mayor, I, I, I mean, that was what I was going to say before Dr. Hammond's book as well. It's like, have we talked to ShopRite or Kings? Because I think those are the, really the two businesses that would be hurt the most by at least the items that were listed in their 5799 package.
Well, this is kind of the same, um, philosophy behind the farmer's market. People say, well, you're selling the same things you can buy in ShopRite and Kings. You know, it's, um, I know people who have tried to get ShopRite deliveries and ShopRite orders and you have to get up at 1 o'clock in the morning to get on the list to get a delivery, you know, a week or a week later.
Yeah, agreed. Because ShopRite. Yeah, no, but I mean, that's because ShopRite in Bernardsville and Kings don't deliver, right? They, or they don't do ShopRite from home. They don't participate in that. You have to do Morris Town or, uh, Morris Plains or whatever the other big areas are. So I, but I do know that, I mean, or at least I've heard that some of these, um, people are contemplating not allowing people in grocery stores any longer. So if that's the case, then ShopRite's going to be either forced to change their model or close. So I just don't know if we have, has anybody talked with them about what they were thinking about? Because they've been very, um, very advanced, I feel, ShopRite. You know, they've been kind of setting the way, especially, you know, these, the key ones, the one that's in Bernardsville for us, but also they own a few others. And they've kind of taken the measures that then the governor has kind of followed for, for standard practices.
Yeah, I think this is more geared to the people who don't want to go into the stores. And I've heard that from a lot of people that, you know, they're, they're terrified to go into the store because they're either a high risk person, even with the, all the things they're doing in the store, they still don't want to go in there. And they're, you know, they don't have that many options for not going to the store. But that's why I don't.
Right, but what about ShopRite?
From a farmer's market, are we allowing a private business to operate on public property?
Essentially. Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, that, and what I was saying about ShopRite was not for people being afraid to go in because I, I agree with you, Mayor, but I, it's more about are they considering changing their business model for things like that? And then in this case, this would be kind of direct competition, if you will.
I'd just like to add.
Christine, you, you have, yeah, go ahead. You brought this up, so you.
Yeah, so the first thing that occurred to me about this is that you're putting the people that work in ShopRite and the people that work in Kings in danger as well. And those people, a lot of them, they really don't have a choice. So to me, this seemed like a great solution to the over, uh, overcrowding that's happening in some of the stores. And I know it's not as bad as it might be in some other communities, but it is a, a big concern. There's people on the front lines, you know, they're not doctors or nurses, but they're there risking their health just to sell us groceries. So if this could alleviate some of that, that was what I was thinking. And it seems like it's not a giant operation. It's just for a select few people who would be willing to say, you know what, I don't need to go to ShopRite if all I need are the basic necessities. The box only has a certain number of things. You can't, you know, specify different things. So this would be, you know, a way to alleviate the pressure off of ShopRite. And I don't know about the owners of ShopRite, but I do know about the employees of ShopRite and the employees of Kings who are concerned for their own safety. So if this is a way to relieve that, I don't know of any other way to do that.
Uh, I'm, I'm supportive of the approach. I like the idea. I think we need to be creative. We need to look at all of our options and opportunities and we need to move quickly because, you know, waiting two weeks, you know, probably isn't an option at this point in time. So I'm supportive. I just said, you know, we should have the opportunity to revisit it, you know, as we go along. So if there's unintended consequences that we run into, then we have the chance to revisit it. You have permission until the duration of the, uh, of the state level of emergency runs out, you know, and then we're, we're, we don't have any discretion then. So I would.
A very definitive time point is until the state enters phase one of reopening.
Yeah, but I mean, even then, we don't control when that happens either though, Councilman McQueen. So I'm just saying maybe we put our own timeline on it, which is the sooner of whenever we decide X, four weeks, or when we enter phase one, either one of those things is the outcome then.
It actually said that they could start next week. So, you know, they, that's, which is why I put, I figure as long as we were meeting, I would put it on tonight's agenda because they, they were ready to go next week. And I think the sooner the better because they may only be doing this for four weeks, three, four weeks, that, you know, may be the end of it.
Yeah, if we're talking about three hours, one time a week, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a major competitive, uh, disadvantage to our local.
And if it's only limited, and it's important to me that it's only limited to the sort of prepackaged necessities.
Yeah. And, um, to that point, I would certainly ask them if, um, I, I would think there's a fee involved for the borough. There should be some kind of, um, percentage or I don't know what, but they should be paying us something as a private company.
But I mean, if we're using, if we end up using the Polo Grounds, which I think that that is a better, much better location, um, isn't that school property then?
No, we own the parking lot by the pool.
But I mean, they would have to keep going all the way around to get out, right?
Yeah, but the actual pickup place would be in the pool parking lot. So driving through, I don't think matters.
I would also, I think we need to specify, or at least have them specify a cap on the number. You know, Christine said, or maybe the mayor said 50, their, their paperwork said 100. It could be, if it became 200, 250, that could, that could get really ungainly.
It would seem like insurance and the whole termless.
Yes.
I think, you know, 100 over three hours seems manageable from what I've seen as far as like the elementary school or middle school drop off or pickup time. They cycle lots more than that through there in that time.
Less than that, yeah.
Yeah, but they go all the way around the back by the.
I'm just saying we have three hours to move 100 cars. It seems practical to me.
No, but that's what we would, if they picked up in the parking lot, they would continue all the way around so that, um, or maybe it should go the, the other way. Trying to think because that's where it's going, it's going to back up in the parking lot out on Tassini, no?
How many people are, that's why I asked, how many people do you think you expect coming in, in the three hour period? I mean, to pick the box up, it should only take less than two minutes a person.
Yeah.
So they should be moving through it quickly. But that's why I asked if they're going to allot time slots for people to pick up. I think they need to be responsible for their traffic control plan. They need to be responsible for their cones and barricades. We don't have borough employees that can be assisting them right now with, you know, setting up operations. The farmer's market is completely run by volunteers. You know, so they have to come up with a plan to deal with these issues.
They already have that in the agenda. It's like the last page of the, um, agenda where they provide the picture from Milburn. They, uh, describe their process as you have a make and model of your. and model of your license plate, and you go at a certain time, and they just put it in your trunk and you leave. So I, there's no contact and there's no, ideally
Yeah, I'm not worried about the contact. I'm just worried about the, the stacking of vehicles. If they have like a time slot for people that they're supposed to be there, and you don't have everybody coming at once, you're probably not going to have any problems at all if you limit, limit it to like 50 vehicles.
Yeah, it says, it says boxcar pickups, about 30 to 100 boxes daily.
I, I think that range sounds eminently doable, especially if they have time slots allowed.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, my
Are we, are we all, is 50 the number that we want to limit this at?
Okay with 100.
I'm okay with 100.
I think it's just a matter of, you know, the timing, if they control the timing of it.
I just don't want to exceed a certain number. I'm okay with that being the maximum.
Well, i- if, for me, it gets to two things. It gets to Gina's concern about unnecessarily taking from our local businesses. And I think it also helps control the traffic issue.
I mean, if you think about it, if they expand and they get their pizza boxes from someplace other than Lenny's.
Yep.
That could have, and you, you take off 100 orders a week from them, that could have really serious impact. And in fact, it would impact Shop Right, you know, in terms of they may start laying off people.
Well, and, and I mean, is there a way in this that they can, they can source this locally? That, that to me is far more palatable than sourcing it.
Well, I think, I think that's their goal, is finding people that are local who want to, you know, they even asked if they could reach out to some of the farmer's market people that we, some of those vendors, to see if they want to be part of the program. Because I know some of the, we've heard from some of the vendors that are still operating their farms.
I mean, can we put the expectation that this is sourced locally unless we're otherwise notified?
I'm not sure that's their model, Chad. I mean, they're, they're partnered with this, with this Garjulo, I think it was, because they, those people service restaurants, which are now closed.
Right.
So their model was to partner with this other group so that they both would stay alive.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, but they are using other produce wholesalers, like the one they mentioned in the Princeton-Trenton area where Garjulo isn't as prominent or quick, easy deliveries. But they also wrote in the, in the end, it says, "We hope to expand to allow other local merchants to, to sell directly to the trunks of people's cars and bill their accounts touchlessly through Boxcar." So they're kind of also looking to be like a PayPal, if you will, for these other vendors. So I mean, there's, there's other implications, I think, and maybe some unintended consequences that we have to think about, which, and I, I keep thinking about Shop Right and Kings. If they were thinking about expanding their own services to include Shop Right From Home or Kings From Home and Pick Up, you know, I don't know that they're not working on that, because I haven't spoken to them. I don't know if anybody has. That's something else that I just keep thinking about in the back of my mind.
I think we have to weigh that, whether or not it's a benefit to our community. Do we approve it in the short term? And do we have a, the ability to pull the plug on, you know, seven days' notice, just have 14 days' notice, or whatever, if you start to get feedback that it's, it's hurting people. And I think if we write those things into the agreement, better to get started with something and be able to pull the plug on it if it's bad than to, you know, delay two weeks while we try and make it perfect, which I, I, I like the sentiment of trying to make sure we protect the best interest and we minimize unintended consequences. But, you know, to the mayor's point, this may only last three or four weeks at this point, anyway.
Yeah, I'm with you, Tom. I, I think having the right provisions in there. Look, if, if Shop Right came to us and said, look, by next week, we're going to start giving home deliveries, we can then make another decision.
Yeah, I mean, can we just write in that, you know, you're approved, you're approved on a week-by-week basis for a month? You know, any, any time we can give you seven days' notice and pull the plug, something like that. And at that point, if that's what we, they'll agree to, and if that's what we think is acceptable, then maybe we can go forward with that. I don't know if they need 10 days' notice instead of seven days' notice, something like that, you know?
Yeah, no, I will have a conversation with them and, and bring up all these points. And then I'll email everybody with what they've come back with.
Right, we may get to the May 11th meeting.
Can we approve it now?
We may get to the May 11th meeting.
Approved until May 11th, and then we'll revisit?
Right.
That's our meeting. That's the only reason I say that. And then we don't meet again until May 26.
Yeah, I mean, we may be done with this by May, you know?
That's my hope.
But yeah, so I will have a conversation with them and we'll, I'll get back to everybody. But you're, you're all okay with the concept as long as we have some control over it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need, can we, like we have in the past, make a resolution to approve it with Mary Jane's negotiation?
Yes.
Yeah, then we would negotiate insurance coverage and, and a, and a fee to the borough? Or did we say, is a fee legally allowed, Jack?
I, I think it's hard to do a fee. If it's, if it's only going to be three weeks, I would more trouble than it's worth.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm with, I'm also in agreement.
Okay, we need their insurance. We need their traffic pattern. We need their
Hold harmless.
Hold harmless, conditions of ending the agreement under, you know, how much time do we need to say it's over?
Well, I would, I would just propose either seven or 10 days, whatever people are comfortable with, and let them say no to that if they can't do it, Mary Jane.
Okay.
And is there any provision or anything we need to put in about their idea to expand to local businesses to also help sell directly to the trunks of cars?
I mean, I wouldn't approve that at this point. I mean, I, you know, because then you're going to add more people, more congestion, I think, if they're
Yeah, it's just in their model. So maybe just make it as part of your discussion with them.
That, that it's our preference.
Right.
I think we also, to your list, Mayor, we also had, they had a cap of 100.
Right.
Right, yeah, I did write that, not exceed, not to exceed 100. Okay, we need, do we need to do a resolution as such, or?
I, I think we could do a motion tonight with all those conditions.
Okay.
I move.
I'll second.
Are, are we public? Can we motion it now and get it and just be done?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Because everybody keeps saying tonight, so I, I wanted to know if we were going to meet later in an hour.
This is it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
May 11th.
Okay, to, through May 11th. You guys have a Public Works meeting at 6:30?
That's correct.
Okay, do we have anything else? I think that was it for the agenda. Yes, we right?
Dernman is next.
What?
Dernman is next.
Dernman, yes, that was it. So, you good, Anthony?
Yeah, that, that was it.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Anthony, we're just going to ask the Public Works Committee, right? Stay online?
Yep, and then the recording is, is stopped right now.